I will call to order the town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a regular meeting, Thursday, February seventeenth, and the time is six P M according to Verizon. Ms. Benitez, will you take the role?
Commissioner Adam. I see she's present.
She just went off.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost. Not here. Chairman Pranzo.
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Benitez. The pledge of allegiance, those who want to stand, I need to be closer to the paper. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, discussion approval, disapproval in a minutes a really meeting conducted on February third, twenty twenty-two. In the absence of Mr. Frost, the very end of the minutes, in bold, it seems to go on to talk about Filiberto's Restaurant. We need to line that out.
The, the very first sentence?
The very, very last paragraph where a motion is made to accept the very end of that bold paragraph is right of way near Rose, the design review for a new Filiberto's Restaurant. Do you see it?
Yeah.
Am I the only one that has that?
No, I see it. That's the motion, right?
I.
Chairman, are you talking about paragraph B, paragraph B called to the public commission response? Vice Chair Frost asked about the alleys in the town, especially behind the new Filiberto's site.
Right. No, I'm fine now. I was, I must have read this six times and I misread it wrong each time. I apologize.
Okay.
Actually, only that paragraph I read six times. The rest I just kind of reviewed. But anyway, I'll open it up to the commission for any questions or comments on the minutes. I'll take that silence as there's no questions or comments. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes from the left.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Kapalongo to accept the minutes. Hang on just a second. I want to add a little bit more to that. The minutes conducted on February third, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion carried. Moving along, new business presentation approval, approval with conditions, denial of a design review for the new Wheaton Dental Building at four fifty-four North Pinell Parkway Avenue. Ms. Benitez, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Great.
All right. Today we are doing the design review for Wheaton Dental. This has already come towards the commission for in terms of the infill request for reduction in parking. But now we are back with the design review after its infill request approval by council on the seventh. Now, the applicant is Associate Architects. They are here tonight to answer any questions that the commission has. And this is again for a new dental office in the B two zoning along Pinell Parkway Avenue or Highway seventy-nine. And the lot is currently vacant, and this is across from Mount Nethers. As we've seen previously, this is their site plan that they've had. They haven't changed anything. It's the same as when I presented it for the infill request. And so has the inside. It's still the same. Now, the building square footed has not changed, but the outside, now we have more detail. We're looking at a modern building facade, which is what is prevalent in that area. And it has stucco with some stone veneer kind of columns on the side. The colors are a variety of browns, and there's some grays within the stones. And in the inside, as seen on the interior plan, we're including lobbies. We have their reception, six operatories, a lab, X-ray station, offices, and some other spaces. And this is, they're making this building so they can have this, all this extra space, which they don't have in their current building across the street. Structure is eighteen feet tall, and in the site plan, the building meets all the B two setbacks and height requirements put in the town development code. And this is just to show the legend, the colors that will be on the building. You see browns, and then the grays will come in the form of the roof tiles and the stone. These are some of the elevations provided on the design of the building that they plan to build. This is the west and east elevation. Access will be provided from Ruggles and Pinell Parkway. They have submitted a traffic impact letter, which the town engineer did approve of. And the code requires one space per hundred gross square feet. But we have included that reduction of parking through the approval of the camp of the commission and the council that infill request. Something that they do have also is a three-foot wall to provide shielding for their parking along with some landscaping. And we do ask a condition be put in for the developer out of six-foot wall in the back to screen off their property from the residential properties that sit behind their site. That is in the site, um, in the staff report, one of the conditions. Currently, there is no established landscaping beyond some weeds and other things. And landscaping will be provided, especially in the rear. That's where the highest density of landscaping will be. And the architects have referenced the low water use plant list that the town follows, which is one that comes from the Arizona and or the Pinell County inmate. And there were no lighting plans shown, but that is something we need and will be one of the conditions. We will ask that it follows the town lighting code. And any landscaping that goes in the right of way will need approval from the town of Florence or a dot wherever the landscaping lands. Signage is not included in this package. It will come later. Now, the planning and zoning condition may move to approve with the listed conditions in the staff report or deny the designer view for and dental. As I stated before, we do have associates here to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Benitez. I'll turn it over to the commission for any questions, comments. Can we go back to a, a different screen?
Yeah.
There we go. Um, any questions or comments? Pretty brown vanilla, actually.
Mr. Chairman, I see that the building is just below twenty-five hundred square feet based on our, our meeting here. Is that, so that does not require waters, sprinklers or fire sprinklers? Is that?
I'll leave that question to Ms. Benitez.
Keith, is that something that we? Since you are our fire marshal.
That's, sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. You caught me off guard. Oh, no, that building, the building, yes, but it does not require first.
Okay. Right. With the old or new keys, would it have, if they went over twenty-five hundred square feet, would they have been required to provide sprinklers?
No, this is actually a B occupancy, B occupancies to the present code, and then the new code will not require fire sprinklers until it hits a, I believe, a occupancy of a hundred in the.
Or five thousand square or five thousand.
So it's twelve, it's actually twelve thousand square foot. Or, okay, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. I don't want to get off track. I'm still.
Yeah.
Trying to get that straight in my head. The, the site plan with the exception of lights has been reviewed. So really what we're looking at is the building architecture, which is professional looking. And in my opinion enhances that corner. That's really the only comments I could make. It, the building appears to be usable. Um, we've talked about the parking. We've talked about ingress and egress as far as traffic. I'm at a loss to really drill down. I'll leave it to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, I see no reason not to go ahead and approve with the conditions. Uh, lighting, of course, a concern, but that's, that needs to be one of the conditions.
I don't see any reason either. So I'll close the discussion and ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Adam to approve the design review of the new Wheaton Dental Building at four fifty-four North Pinell Parkway. This would be A P N two hundred dash forty-seven dash four five zero. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All of the opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Um, Ms. Benitez, will this allow the applicant? Ms. Benitez, will this allow the applicant to draw a building permit?
Yes, now that the design review is approved, they can go forward with building permits.
Excellent, excellent. Just as a side comment, he really needs the space. He's my dentist. Okay. Presentation information only. State prison and economic transition, economic transition. I gotta hear this.
Well, I feel bad speaking on this since Vice Chair Frost was the one who asked for it in the last meeting. But as for the state prison, they have pretty much worked on moving out most of their, most of the inmates. The main ones that are there are the sexual offenders are still in the south unit, and they'll remain there until they find more suitable place for them to be transferred. As for the rest of it is slowly closing thing down. There are no official plans yet. But according to the state, the main idea that they're looking at is to use that facility as a state department of emergency management training ground. That's one of the main or preferred uses they're looking to transition into. Other than that, there have been opinions of using it as an industrial park, as a museum, and or some sort of commercial, some sort of commercial use. But the main, the main use that they're looking at is a emergency management training ground. That is what I've heard in the grapevine. It is kind of hard to get information out at the state since they didn't even tell us they're closing down the prison at the very, at the beginning of all this. But that is what we've heard for the economic transition and future plans for the state prison.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a question. Is there a timeline for, um, for the state to close the prison? Is there a timeline been established?
They're looking to have it fully closed by the end of the year, except for the south unit.
Any other questions or comments?
So it sounds like there is no longer a conversation going on between the state and our town officials. I know that earlier on, there was discussion with Brent Billingsley, and it was going along the lines of this is a significant economic impact to Florence that we had no control over. And there was some discussion of the land usage. Uh, so you had mentioned an industrial complex or something of the sort that would help offset the loss to the town of Florence. So I just want to raise that and keep it on the town officials radar that we should be knocking at their door and insisting to have some sort of conversation. Because even if they are going to use it for a training, I'm not thinking they need all that land.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good thinking, Kathy.
Taxpayer Gary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's an interesting prospect. Years ago, as a part of planning and zoning, I think it was in a general plan revision, much of what we're going through now. We talked about locating light industrial land on that side of seventy-nine. And I mean, it was really done more or less to have light industrial land, but the problem is that the problem is transportation. Uh, even with the new highway, the routing is too far away for an industrial. But you're right. Commissioner Adam.
Well, I know.
I had.
Council needs to be pushed to go in that direction to knock on doors.
Right, and there was a very preliminary early conversation with T J Schock and the former warden of the prison and talking about, I was raising my hand as part of the Pinell County Historical Society that, you know, Yuma Territorial Prison is hugely successful. And it's a great economic driver to Yuma. And I would certainly like the opportunity for, if not our museum, the town of Florence, to operate the second territorial museum.
That's an interesting concept. You're right.
There's a lot that can be done with that.
Well, we'll have to see.
Chairman, uh, I've been reviewing, you know, the the plan here. The general plan and on page fifty, it talks about expanding the prison. And I, my question was, why would we talk about expanding the prison in our general plan when the state's going to close it? So I guess I, I was surprised to learn just now that the state has made the decision to close the prison. I know we've been talking about it, but. So anyway, I missed something somewhere, but it is interesting that in the general plan, we're talking about expand on page fifty.
Yeah. You're right, but it is going away and the jobs with it are going with it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the state prison? All right, we'll move forward. Alleys in the town of Florence, that's an interesting subject.
This subject came up after the Filibertos, there was an alley behind that site and Vice Chair Frost and the other commissioners. You all wanted to know, what if we just give that land back to the owners? Or what are the, what is the use of these alleys within the town? One word answer, utilities. The alleys within the town holds water, sewer, electric and gas. Specifically, the alley behind Filiberto's holds the water and sewer lines. So that's why we cannot give that land back to the owners, because we need that right of way in order to work on utilities without interfering or ripping up prop, private property land or property owner's land, and then they have to go back in and fix what we were, what we messed up. But that, that is mainly what these alleys, for they are now, they were used previously for garbage, but they are no longer. Curtis, our building, not, our code enforcement, Curtis Williams, has told me that those alleys are no longer used for trash pickup, but they are used for electric, gas, water and sewer lines. And that is their main purpose.
All right, well, it's a utility right of way and a private company is involved. So that is what it is. All right, let's move on. Update on redevelopment plan in the town of Florence.
So this was a request from Commissioner Adam that we go over parts of the redevelopment plan for the south part of town. As we do not want to forget, as we continue to try to redevelop northern half, we do not want to forget other parts, as stated, like our neighborhoods or the southern part of our town, which is also a major gateway within Florence. One of the main things we are aligning with in the recommendation set forth in our redevelopment plan is the design and implementation of the roundabouts. As much as everyone is a fan of the idea of roundabouts, it is something that is supposed to improve our infrastructure and is included as a recommendation in redeveloping the southern part of Florence. Another part was rebranding our identity as the town of Florence that, as we can see, that's already done with the town logo that we see with Sean's cover. And some other parts are trying to combine parcels within the southern portion of the town of Florence to create larger spaces that could be reused for businesses. That one is one of the more challenging because of the number of owners that own these different lots that are vacant, but next to businesses that could use them as either parking or could use them as another space for a, for their business. But as we go on with case by case, we are finding that we can alert owners that they can combine these lots. But that is just something that'll come with time as people come in. Another main part that we are addressing when it comes to the redevelopment plan on the south part of town of Florence is we are cleaning up some properties. The Westerner definitely looks better than it used to. We, it is still con, non-conforming in some ways, but that's because it is a grandfathered lot. But there is cleanup taking part, and with the update in some of our code enforcement policies, that will certainly help when it comes to areas in the south, southern part of town. But some other active projects that we have coming into the southern part are a little exciting, like the mini storage. We also have someone who has purchased the old Dollar General. They haven't gone through the pre-application process, so I can't talk too much about that. But we also have people looking at multifamily just outside of that corridor. And they're looking at doing small multifamily units to have an increase of density and to be able to sell those spaces to people who need them and increase housing in the area. Other than that, that's kind of what we have going on the southern portion of town.
Okay, I'll open it up to commission. Any questions and comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Adam. Uh, thank you for that. What I was really trying to get at is, you know, I, I look at it like the redevelopment plan is, is somewhat of a subset of the general plan, and a lot of the wording is very similar for the hopes and dreams of the historic district. But the redevelopment plan is a year old now. And the roundabouts are a state project. And what I'm really concerned about is, one of the really exciting things about the redevelopment plan was developing that south end to be a gateway into Florence. And I'm not seeing anything. I, I understand now there's a lot of different smaller properties and it's difficult to piece together. But it's just disappointing that we just lost our economic development manager, and I, I don't see any action or any movement. And so, you know, we spent a lot of time on the redevelopment plan. And now we're spending a lot of time on the general plan. And I'm not seeing anything happening. So I think that the gateway is something that to my mind should be a front and center priority. Mini storage doesn't excite me coming into town. So I don't know where that responsibility lies, but since we're all here and we will be having more meetings on the general plan, I'm kind of starting to lose some interest.
The redevelopment, I'll give you my two cents worth. The redevelopment plan made several points, and as Commissioner Adam just said, one of the things that was attractive was working to set the table so that the southern entrance becomes more attractive. And that's really all from a government standpoint, that's all we can do is set the table. It's up to the public to decide whether they want to invest or not. But with that said, the town needs to provide a, a level of leadership, not necessarily through citations or even interface with people, but just in the way that they care for the town. Street cleaning, which is really rather infrequent. And I understand that we have a personnel shortage, but it matters. Parks. Perfect example is Padilla Park. It used to be beautiful. Why did we stop taking care of it? That is an example of what government thinks about the side of town. Uh, and it's unfortunate. The grass is dead now. Bushes are overgrown, and it's no different at Heritage Park as well. So the way that we take care of the public property sets an example for the public as far as them taking pride in their ownership. These are important pieces. So I'd like to see, and I know, Ms. Benitez, I'm beating on you, and I know you don't have any horsepower in this area, but these are words worth saying. Government has to, in certain areas, set an example. And if we don't bitch about it, the squeaky wheel will never get any grease, and I've been bitching about this for a long time. And like I said, I'm very encouraged by the words I heard at council, but it's not the first time I've heard those words. So we'll see. Any other questions or comments?
Well, with regard to, um, you know, the economic development, uh, I mean, what are the hurdles? Is it a tax rate? Why, and why, uh, commercial, but, uh, you know, businesses aren't come, aren't, aren't taking a second look. They, they're, they're going to Coolidge and some other towns, but, uh, is it the tax rate? What, I mean, what are the hurdles? What's keeping uh, people from being interested in investing in our town? And like you said, especially, you know, the south part, the. Uh people from being interested in investing in our town. And like you said, especially, you know, the south part, the, the downtown area.
Um, I, I can speak to that, uh, if would, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So. Yeah, I could speak a little bit to that because I'm very much uh involved in most all these areas, you know. As far as economic development as well, as far as community development director. So they're not, not coming here for specific reasons. What they're looking for right now, we are getting a lot of tire kicking going on the commercial side. Uh quite frankly, what we're hearing, they're waiting on rooftops. In some towns and some cities, uh they base their um their research or restaurants. I used to build restaurants, so I kind of know how this works. And they base it on population. Here, we can't really base it on population. We've got a large majority of our pop, population. That can't get out and go to Applebee's or can't get out and go to go to Dairy Queen. So. What we're doing right now is they're waiting on rooftops, um and we're getting rooftops and and we're getting. Uh as many rooftops downtown in south of the Gila. In the next five years, as many as going north of it. So which is very awesome. It's very awesome for uh. For south of the Gila, not only for residents, uh restaurants, attractiveness and that kind of thing too. We're not hearing anything negative out of anybody that's looking to come here. Uh they're simply, commercial wise, they're simply waiting on rooftops and and we're giving them as quick as we can. No, but but we don't hear anything negative. When people do get down here and Elon done a very good job. Uh and and we've actually divvied up his duties amongst a few of us. Uh and and Lisa, of course, is is uh leading that charge. We are still. We're still actively looking. We're, we still actively fill up our Wednesday pre, pre-con meetings with the questions of developers and. Commercial and residential. So that they're, they're coming. Uh it's, it's just a matter of. Getting those rooftops. And so, like I say, we hear nothing but good things. Once we get people down here, there's a couple instances that people, developers haven't been this direction for a long time. Once they see what's going on down here, they're very excited. Uh so there's, there's a number of things that we can't really talk about right now going, that's in the mix. Uh that's, that'll be coming before this commission, you know, in the, in the coming months. So I hope that kind of. Touches, touches on that a little bit for you, Commissioner. I, like I say, there's, we hear absolutely zero negative about the town of Florence when people are coming here.
Okay, well, that's, that's great to hear. Uh I know for myself, I've done some back of the envelope calculations and I would love to see. The, the market analysis for the, analysis for those commercials who are. Opening a business that is local cash flow dependent. It would be interesting to see how they pencil that because uh my numbers. Would shy me away from doing that. So, yeah, you're exactly right. Need more rooftops to increase the potential for cash flow. Okay, uh moving right along, general plan update.
I know you're all tired of hearing about it. But for the general plan, we're still in our sixty day review. We planned, you have a work session. On the twenty eighth with the commission and council to go over what we currently have. In the general plan. And then in our water element to make sure everything matches up before we take it to public hearings. And we do not want to have mismatched words in what. This person saw at this part and what another person saw. We want, when. We take that final draft forward, we want it all to be consistent. So that is the purpose of the meeting on February twenty eighth. It's at six PM and it is in person. So save the date for that work session.
Okay, be there, be square, huh?
Yes.
Oh, that was a great update. Um moving right along. How successful was our home tour?
Our home tour was very successful. We sold over six hundred and thirty, I think it was six hundred and thirty-one tickets we sold. For the event. More came for on the day of, spread out. Our six homes, all of our homeowners got. Super excited about the event. They got nothing but good comments from the people who came through. There were not many issues on the day of. The trolleys ran, trolleys came, the trolleys ran. And we had people stay because we still had a large number to come to the Battle of Bands event that happened afterwards. We had nothing but good feedback. And on Tuesday, we had. A post-home tour meeting to kind of review everything and hopefully next year, we'll bring it back even better. We already have homes asking to be on the home, home tour for next year. So that is very encouraging.
Excellent. Good to hear. All right, and what we've all been waiting for, future agenda items.
Future agenda items. Yes, we currently have items for the next agenda, so you all don't get off the hook for next meeting. We have a. Request for interpretation of the code. We have a gentleman who has been, has a successful tobacco shop in Coolidge and he wants to expand in Florence. He's looking at a building in the downtown commercial area, but our code does not quite interpret for his use. So we have, he has sent in a letter request to have interpretation from the commission to see if we can move forward with. Allowing it within the downtown commercial area.
Okay.
Uh another item we will have is. The preliminary plat for Freedom Farms expired on February third. Because it's been a year since you guys approved it. Now we have a developer. Who has picked up those parcels, but they need to bring that preliminary plat in to have an extension. For the approval. So we'll bring back that preliminary plat for the commission to look over and reapprove. And Keith, am I missing anything? I feel like there's one more item.
I can't think of anything, anything else besides my report.
Okay. That's all we have right now that I can remember for the upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Any question, any questions or comments?
No.
God, this is a tough crowd. Okay, um. Moving right along. Call it a public. Do we have any public?
Uh we do have one member uh on the meeting.
Okay, uh call it a public for po, public comment and issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning, Zoning Commission. Uh and what it simply means is that. We can, we will listen to any comments you have, but unless. The subject is on tonight's agenda, we cannot answer. So. Does any members of the public wish to address the commission?
If you'd like to speak, if you could just raise your hand in the app and we'll let you speak, otherwise we'll move on. And he has raised his hand, so I will allow him to talk.
Is that a, that's a hand up by Dominic Roger?
Yes.
Over.
Yes, sir. Uh I just really have a question. I live in the Merrill Ranch Development. And I have a firearms training company and I am entertaining the possibility of applying for an FFL license. Um part of the FFL paperwork says that. The premises uh must comply with zoning ordinances. So my question is, is there any zoning ordinances? For operating an FFL out of a residential building?
Okay, Dom, Dominic, I'm going to refer that to staff. You will need to visit our community development director. Um this is something that is not on our agenda, so we cannot address it. That's state statute. And aside from that, uh a visit to the community development would be um your first step. So I wish you luck and uh I'll refer that to staff.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'll close. Call to the public, open to the commission, current events only. Somebody's got to have a comment here.
Mr. Chairman. If I, if I can, uh just take a second. So. Uh first of all, I'd really like to thank this commission uh for joining us in work session the other night. It was a rather lengthy work session, but we appreciate you hanging on there with us. Um and but it was very helpful. Uh it, it was the first time that I had put two commissions. Uh spoke to two commissions and a council all at once with a work session. So it was a little bit different, but. I appreciate you all. Uh and also Commissioner Capalongo, we missed you. Uh I know that you sent it, you sent an email that you could, if you have any questions, shoot me, shoot me an email, give me a call. Um like I say, this, this was very productive. Um we, uh this was very important to council uh. To get all the input. And with that, the codes, uh we've, we made four small changes to the code. Uh the code amendments that we discussed uh the other night, they were three of those changes to the fire sprinklers. Uh to, to um change those, basically lighten those up a little bit. And uh and also to, to strike the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. While we work on the other uh portion of our work session. Uh so that actually the final read and the adoption will be uh next Tuesday night, uh at council meeting for the codes. Uh we're very excited about that. Uh we've already, the changes that we've already made uh is getting out. Uh there is at least one building. Uh that will be waiting till the, after the April fourth. It makes it much easier for them to get into that building. And much cheaper, so it's already paying dividends what we're doing. So that's, that's uh very promising. Uh the second part of that work session was code enforcement, uh as you know, uh and and this group has always spoke about it. Um very passionate council. Uh this is a very high top priority for council. Uh I think for every commission as well as for staff uh to. Take a look at our code enforcement processes uh to include uh everything that goes along with our investigation part of it. Um and uh as far as penalties and that kind of thing too. We've been doing that for a while, but. Now we're going to bring a whole new code and whole new thought ideas back to council. I'm sure that this group will be involved as well. Uh kind of like, I kind of like the idea of running these things past all the, all the commissions. Uh as well, whether it's individually or it's, it's another work session. Um so that input will be uh very valuable. So uh anyway, we're working on that. We've got a time schedule on that, so. A couple of months, we're preparing and researching and then we'll be, be drafting some new uh code. Uh things for council to take a look at. So uh once again, um. This, this commission and all the commissions are very valuable to staff as well as councils. So I just want to thank you all. And if you have any questions or comments, a couple of you have reached out to me already just about the, the process. I appreciate that so much. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I believe if I get it right, Saturday is the car show. So. I don't know about you guys, but I really like it. The food's good and there's a lot to look at. Any other current events? All right, then I will close call to the commission and your favorite part and mine. May I have an? A motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Capalongo, second by Commissioner Adam. All in favor?
I.
All, all those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.